Well, we may as well get started.
Okay.
You know everybody that's here?
Yes, okay.
We could state our names.
Wouldn't hurt, you know, we're getting filmed.
Oh, we have more coming.
I hear footsteps.
The pitter-patter of little featses. John, Scott, Larry, B, Dick, David. There's two, there's October and November. So, everybody present will be a voting member this evening, because there are seven of us here. We should go right to the minutes.
Give Sarah a call, if she may not be in. She usually shows up late, that's why. If you call or... Well, when you said seven of us are voting, it may not happen.
Well, that's what's happening right now, at the beginning of the meeting. Is that okay?
Fine with me, I just...
Well, you think that's the proper procedure?
Whatever, it's not a big deal, I was just asking if you knew if she was coming. A lot of times people call and let you know.
So, for the moment, all members at the table will be voting. All right. The first thing I think we should discuss is the minute taker. Betsy has made an offer to do the minutes for us. She would like to be compensated, not for the time at the meeting, where she would be anyway, but for the time correlating the notes in her off time. And I suggested that we pay her $25 an hour for that time. My reasoning, I asked Julie Hoyt what she would have charged, had she been allowed to do the minutes. And she said that she figured on three hours, and it would be $75. Martha Tobin was $150. So, I think that paying Betsy the $25 an hour is appropriate.
So... Actually, I, for one, would like to see us put it in the paper. And my only problem with that is a member doing the minutes. I think any one of us could do them, and I would volunteer to do them for nothing. But having a member do the minutes, 90% of the time, we'd be objective. But when it comes down to issues, and it comes down to voting time, it's just, it's not appropriate, I don't think. I just don't find it, it lacks transparency. And I think we need an objective person that isn't a member to do the minutes. This is a voting member. And to have a voting member write down what the public is going to see, in their, you know, in their way, if I were to do it, it, just, I, I think when it came down to an issue, that it was important to me, I don't think anyone could do it that objectively. Now, minutes like these, they're objective, and they're, there's no issue here, and we're not voting on anything, and we're not making decisions. But to, to, I, I just think it's a mistake. And we're talking about $800, $900 a year, to have, you know, somebody outside, you know, do the minutes. And I just don't understand why we wouldn't do that. But to have a member do them, I, I have a real problem with that, I just don't find it very, you know...
I'm a member of a number of organizations, and we have always had a member keeping the minutes for each organization.
But we're making decisions on people's progress.
Okay, I'm not going to have cross-talk. You got to say, David, you go ahead and express yourself.
Yeah, I'm sorry to butt in there. Yeah, I, I don't see any problem with that, in the different organizations that I've been in. Well, that's it.
Scott?
Just speaking from experience, I think what you're saying, Larry, is fine. I'm not sure I object to a member doing the minutes, but there's some other advantages to having an outside party do it. One being that all members can pay more attention to the discussion, as opposed to... But in any case, speaking from experience, to follow what you're concerned about, Larry, you would, we would need to have someone taking minutes, for which, where the minutes are acceptable, sort of as-is. And that's not been the case, at least in my time on the board. Usually chairman, or someone helping the chairman quite often. We had to do quite a bit of editing to the minutes that were taken by the people that we've had taking minutes. And so, I don't see that, I mean, your concern now is, you know, we were doing what you're concerned about all along.
Right. And, and, you know, do you mind if I respond to that? You know, my thoughts on that are, when, you know, yes, there should be editing. Of course, I believe the editing should be done here, by the members, and not by, you know, one or two people, you know, a chairman or something, you know, when you... The only editing that needs to be done by the chairman, or to bring to us, would be spelling, or grammar, that kind of thing. But when we bring the minutes back here to be approved, you know, isn't that self...
Okay, I'm going to come in on this now.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the one hand, you're saying, the minute taker being one of us, would not be an accurate representation of what went on, especially if you had a real heartfelt issue. I think we're all adult enough at the table to listen. I think Betsy will write down a very concise version of whatever went on. And we have the opportunity to amend the minutes. If it isn't the way you felt you said it, that's what we do. We do that with whoever the minute taker is.
I did ask Julie Hoyt if she was available, from time to time, to take minutes, so if we needed somebody... She'd give me an hour or a wage set, but she did say she was occasionally available, so... I don't know if that solves the problem, or not.
Isn't that what we were hoping for, but we weren't allowed?
That was her original, but I was told by the office manager that she would not be available. And I don't know, I'll pursue that one more time.
I spoke to her two days ago, that I believe.
Great, because last week, we're all set, or last week, last meeting, month ago, we were set to go, and I found out the day before.
But that wasn't because Julie didn't want to do it, it was because there was a health insurance issue.
Too many hours, was it?
Yeah, it was going to be a financial issue.
Well, given that we pay the person taking the minutes, it's going to be more like a, does she have health insurance?
Well, they were going to call, they called the local government center. And the local government center felt that she would still be a town employee, even if we paid her out of our budget.
So, that would have been like an overtime, or something.
Or something.
Yeah, we can talk about that, I'll ask her to see if we can work something out. I don't think we're not talking a series of hours, over two hours, or three hours a month.
It'd be ideal if we did that, but when we advertised before, we ended up with people, one person, you know, applied from Eaton or something or other, and wasn't able to come, in snowy weather or something. We had just terrible luck trying to get a secretary.
I'll ask her, let's see what we'll do.
And admin is Julie Atwell, she's...
Have we ever put it...
Was it Julie Atwell that refused?
Well, we have motion on the table.
Have we ever put it up to bid, or put it in the paper to...
It's been...
A couple of times, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, in five years, I've been here, I don't recall that.
This was a while ago, I remember...
That's quite a few years ago.
Excuse me?
That's quite a few years ago. I've been here on this board for almost five years, and we haven't done that.
Well, we've had satisfactory secretary coverage, but when Sue Lee left, we spent a couple of years trying to figure out how to do it. We, you know, advertised it a few times, we had different people coming in, it was difficult.
Okay, I have a motion, second. Any in favor? Five. Posed?
Posed.
Two.
I think they should be off the board.
Excuse me?
I said, I think they should be off the board.
Just the members should be off the board.
Okay. So now, I'm going to move ahead, we have a guest tonight, from North Country Council, and I'd like her to come up and speak with us, before we do any other business, so that she could get on the road, and head home, and doesn't have to sit through the whole thing. Tara Banford.
Scott, I've had a lot of back and forth with you, but I think never met in person.
Nice to meet you.
So, let's get the handouts over with. Brought a few things to share, that, kind of to give you an idea what, what I've been looking at, thinking about, as in doing the first steps to get ready for this project. Some extras here, for anyone that's not here tonight. So... The maps are pretty self-explanatory, but I do have a list of questions that goes with that. I have been in touch with, with you, Betsy, about the conservation land. You can see, and it's easier to see on the map, that doesn't have a photo behind it. The shaded areas are what, what we have in the granite database as conserved. And pretty quickly, I need to know whether there are any that aren't in this. And if so, I need the parcel numbers, so, wondering what the plan is for that.
Can we identify these, and maybe I can...
I don't need to know anything about the ones that are shaded. I need to know, are there other conserved lands that aren't in the granite database yet? So that I don't accidentally count them as built-in.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, which ones are these? I'm not...
Oh, I see what you mean.
This large one here, do you know? Yeah, you mentioned it.
Yeah, I didn't, I could have printed that out.
Like, which one is Rockland and... Rockwell, excuse me, and Burgess. SPNH, the Society for Protection, New Hampshire Forest, they have the Rockwell, which, is it this one here, this large one? Does anybody know, looking at that? And Burgess. Do you know?
So, if you, I don't, I don't have that with me. If you, if you keep going, and I, I can go back and look, match that up, right?
The ones I know off the top of my head are, are the Society for Protection of New Hampshire Forest. And that would be the Rockwell, Tilney, Pepper, who are the missing, Burgess, the four of them.
Yep, Holcombe, I see where they are, I see our land on it.
But that's USBLT, I was going down the, that's the Upper Saco Valley. So, I just knew the four, from the Society.
Holcombe's in New Hampshire, with the protection.
The Society?
Yep, it's, last I knew it was, yep.
Okay, you're right, that might be the fifth one.
That's up New Hampshire.
Oh, I don't know lot numbers.
So, if, if you know who, who has an easement in town, and you know that spinoff for Upper Saco Valley, then I could check with that.
What about deed restrictions, which, that have easements in, you know, that have, protect land? Like, I know we have Graustein Way over here, and it has a pretty good size, you know, deed restriction, it can't be built upon, they have three blocks within it.
So, that's the kind of thing that I would need to know.
Wasn't that the nature conservator?
It was, I think they sold it.
So, somebody does on easement, and we shouldn't see it on here. And...
So, that would be under, I don't know if it's under retain, or...
That I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Does the nature, does it spell that?
G-R-A-U-S-T-E-I-N, Graustein is, it's on Graustein Way, and it was, I think it was their deed. But it has a pretty good size deed, and then there's the one at the, and I never did find out the name of it, is the one at the end of Malone, did you?
That one's changing, right now.
Oh, all right.
That's in the process. Last I heard, it may be done by the end of the week.
It's that, River Sett down the hallway?
The, what do they call it, Wildcat River something, or Wildcat? It's on the other side of the river, behind, well, Malone Road was in access, but...
And Tech Woods is all house? Yes, behind the, John knows, yeah. He's want to explain it to me, what's up.
So, if there's one that's in the works, and this is a common time of year, maybe you rounded up, can, could somebody get me the parcel number?
And then there's Simone on here, that's the new one, right?
Yeah, right.
Would that have been Inca Mount?
Yeah.
Is that right near Eagle Mountain Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Simone.
Now, did...
That must not be on here, I guess.
Well, let's put this in...
They still have not.
Yeah, anything in the last couple of years, probably isn't on here.
Yeah, they still have not.
You can see where Eagle Mountain Road is, and there's nothing here.
So, who, who can get me the parcel numbers for the ones that are on here? And I, I can...
Well, if I knew the ones that were on here, you know, I don't know what those are, just by looking at it.
Was that an offer, if I email you a list of...
Yeah. Is that an offer? Am I getting paid? I'll, if you want to negotiate.
Do you want to write your email address on here this morning? And I'll, I can probably do that tomorrow.
Well, the, the thing is, is I don't have the parcel numbers. You literally have to stand out here in the hallway, and look them up, and figure them out. They don't, for some reason, they don't go by...
Just I don't, I don't have the knowledge, the vocal knowledge needed to do that, so...
Well, we can do that, if you, if you can email Larry, or all of us, or whatever, the lands that you have, we can, we can go online and look at the name on the tax book.
That would be more, yeah, if we knew which ones you had, maybe we, then I could fill in, help you fill in the ones that you don't have.
R-U-N-W-D?
R-V-N.
R-V-N.
Sorry.
This helps the Conservation Commission too, doesn't it? We're in there some talk of getting just that same list together.
Yeah, yeah, it does help us.
So, what, what would be the timing? Because I've kind of locked out next Wednesday and Thursday to do, do the analysis for this, in order to be able to have a draft report for your January meeting.
Going away the weekend. I'll be back on Sunday, I can, I can do it maybe Monday, the, the, the office has to be open.
As long as I have it.
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday, I can do it for you.
We can, that will keep us on schedule, I agree.
So, you said you'd be here Tuesday and Wednesday, or was it Wednesday and Thursday?
I've, I've scheduled to really use the GIS Wednesday and Friday, to do this analysis, so if I, I have to stay on schedule for having a draft report for your January meeting.
Okay.
Can someone Julie can help? We got the Board of Warrior thing tomorrow, so we kind of booked tomorrow morning. Yeah, I'm, I'm leaving tomorrow, I'm going out of town.
So, then, there's kind of a similar question on here, and I apologize that I don't have two of these. We're reading for a part for a quarter, but... So, this, this is, you know, I received your parcel data, and I linked the data to the map, and printed two different attributes. And one is the zone that's in according to the tax records, as commercial, rural, residential, whether there's a building on the parcel, and that's the kind of black speckled. And then the land use category according to the taxes, and I did some grouping of those. But there are some that didn't have data, and I, and I wonder how we could get those.
Looks like one of them is at the top of Tyrell, that small one there.
One here?
Yeah, could that be, top of Tyrell, maybe?
Looks like it could be, oh, there's Tyrell, Tyrell goes up this way, too. That's the switchback one.
They either were coded wrong, or they don't have data, so it didn't show up when I put them, put the later...
I'll try to figure that out, I mean, use the maps to...
This, is this, where is this in our town, on this? Where am I, not seeing where it's at well?
This is Dundee, right here. So that, this would be...
We're, we're here.
I would think, yeah.
That's Wentworth, right?
Yeah, we're...
Yeah, we're, this is downtown.
Right.
Yes, so, why don't you know what that is? Is it a golf course?
Golf course. Golf course, yeah.
The old ball field, used to be right there in the corner.
So, one of the reasons that one where the golf course is, wouldn't be developable, is because it's floodplain and already used...
They've used it up.
It still should, it still should have a parcel ID, I mean, there's something...
Well, it doesn't have a parcel ID, okay.
There's something wrong in the database. These either don't have a parcel ID, or it's in wrong, so it didn't match the data file.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So, so I was just trying to sort out kind of what they are.
So, we can identify that somewhere, in the tax map.
Right, I mean...
That's what it looks like, is up near Wentworth, but monstrous.
And it might just be that somebody typed something wrong in the data file, or...
Probably more than likely. I'm sure we can figure those out, I mean, must be a way to figure that out.
Yeah, do you want to bring in a tax map now, and be able to identify the one?
Identify it, sure.
Right, I mean, if I could leave her knowing what, which of those categories to stick them in, then I don't care what the number is, really.
Yeah, I see, I didn't really understand it first, but I get it now.
I just, they're mysteries to me, because they don't, you know, match, so they didn't come out. And this will, this will be the layer that I build on, that I put the soils, and the conserv land, and everything else on, to do the analysis, so...
Okay.
I want to make sure the foundation is right, and I'm not missing something.
I think this is Forest Service.
I was going to say, it's...
Thank you.
Yeah, it actually does, it's way out there.
This could be, but two...
Because if this is the, yeah, this is the East Branch. I don't know if it's the...
Okay.
So, this is the East Branch Road.
So, let's see.
I don't understand this, you know, the two roads, but, anyway, this should be Forest Service.
Maybe it should be further down, so that people could...
Yeah, this is hard for us to understand.
So, anything in there, there's no codes on there, maybe you have to go to the tax record service, right?
Well, these are road right-of-way.
Yeah, but I mean, what she said she needs is the, is the lot number. So, if it is this one, then that's 37, but...
So...
Yeah, that's the question, trying to match up the two. Actually, maybe we should keep it the same, like, keep it parallel, yeah, that could make some sense. Or maybe we want to start with this, and see where...
It's even bigger.
Yeah, see where it is we're missing.
That's what I think.
Okay, so it would be...
That one right there?
Oh, that's, R28 will be that big one.
Yep, R28.
All right, let's do that one.
Here we go, if you want to get the book, and...
Boy, you need to get the map, the lot number first.
Okay, R28.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so this is 102. And it's 67, some, 63, 67.3 acres.
673, 673 acres.
Oh. And is R28, 10, R28, 102.
102. So, this one was here, I think.
Okay, so, would that be R3, or...
R7?
That shape, that's not very good, is it?
I'm going to guess R5.
Five?
Okay.
Three, four, five, somewhere around there.
Okay.
Let's see a four, maybe a three.
R8?
Well, that's what I'm, that would explain why I would be it.
There's no R28.
There's no R28.
So, here's 16.
That's it, right there.
Okay, so...
Map nine.
Map nine, okay.
There is no R28, come up with this big one.
Right, because what I have, probably have, is a digital version of that, so...
There's more 28?
Near in line is the problem.
Yeah.
So, it's 37, is that it? No.
No, it's not shaped.
Oh, it might be 37, no.
Is it R9?
No, it's this one, right here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is that one?
Next map, then.
What, what number?
R5.
It says it's map five, we, so we just...
Back again.
I think we're going up five.
Oh, R5.
And that's it. And that's it, that's map nine, eight.
Yeah, see, you see how some of these fell off of that.
What is it?
It's there, and it doesn't have a map number on it, so...
Oh, it has no map.
How about eight?
I'm assuming it's Forest Service, though.
Eight or nine, it wasn't on nine, so how about eight?
Oh, is that, that's not...
Just R9?
No, prospect.
I mean, that's probably...
I think it's Forest Service, maybe, or...
Well, still should be showing up in...
It should be somewhere, yeah.
Should show up in...
Seven, where's seven then?
Let's look at the cover, and just see if it's on the cover.
Well, that's the thing, it wasn't, it was right there.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
You don't know where it's from?
It doesn't, was it fallen, R4, or 7s?
No, because R4, I think the green or the...
Boundaries.
Boundaries.
R7 doesn't do it.
Is that the edge right there, I think?
Could we, could we rule out 4, do we look at...
We did look at 4, I think.
Yeah.
Huh, it's interesting.
You know, R7, we haven't tried, let's do an R7.
Right past one are we to follow?
Let's try R7, or 4, if anything.
Okay, we have R4.
Okay, let's do 7.
Wait a second.
It's not shaped, so...
Is that one are we to follow? Oh, that's in Wildcat. That's on, it's on this side.
Oh, you know what, it's right below that.
It's right below, I was going to say it was over here.
So, yeah, it's right down here, let's...
I have five.
Doesn't have anything.
So, does the map say what's the adjournment?
It doesn't.
If it's not Forest Service, somebody's...
Try three.
Somebody's getting a deal.
All the figures.
Isn't that ridiculous?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
It's almost 40 map, it's...
Yeah, so that's how it...
Area 40, what?
We may have found some, TerraMap errors in the data.
We did look up, yeah, we did look up nine.
Then we never found that one, either, did we?
Not yet.
Okay, what's that one?
Let's just check R7.
Yeah, there's a few small ones on.
Yeah, love to nail down the big ones, though.
Yeah.
The little ones aren't going to matter a whole lot, but R7 need a way out.
Right.
They're still not getting over there. So, how about R1?
It was a one.
A one, and a two, and a one, and a two, and R4.
No, it's still in the black hole.
What rose is this?
So, there's no building on it, or it's not black and speckled.
Yeah.
Well, that's very bizarre.
We're trying to find that one.
Eagle Mountain Road is right on... Eagle Mountain Road is right opposite it. Um, that's near. No, is it?
Below Hillers, it looks like.
It isn't Eagle Mountain Road, is it?
No.
Behind Crothers?
Oh, are we over there now? We're looking at another one?
Yeah, we're trying to figure the, this other big one out since we're completely lost on that one.
This is Dundee.
Okay, so it's Dundee.
So that's either Rockwell. That could be Rockwell.
Luton?
Do you have any other?
Must be VO six, do you think?
Who are the people that are in Projan?
Let's try a VO six.
Could be.
Great.
Should be coming up the backside, shouldn't it?
I think it's way down at the back. It's a V.
VO six.
That's, okay.
VO two.
Here's Dinsmore.
Okay.
Six.
Okay.
And so that's in, this should be map real. That should be map real.
Yeah, and then you have Dinsmore coming up by Old Ledge Villa where.
It, is it thirty-one B three?
This is Old Ledge Villa right here.
Oh, I think you're right.
Thirty-one B three.
Thirty-one B three.
And that's Denny's house.
VO six.
So it wouldn't be thirty-three.
We have the, we have the number.
It's right here. On Hiller Road.
Thirty-one B three.
We'll see if that's.
E six.
Let's see. E and four. Some of them are data. B three Clark. Thirty-one B three. That Clark, J M Clark, seventy-two Hiller Road.
Yeah, you were right, you said Hiller.
It's Hiller Road.
It's my Hiller.
It's J M Clark.
So do we know if there's a house on it or?
I have no idea. We'll have to look it up in the, it's right next to Hiller.
Yeah, the, you know, the map cards, the tax parcel cards would cover that.
That's okay, we know it's, we know it's resident, residential lien. We don't, it's okay to not know if there's a house on it.
And then a couple of the little ones you, you know, we should be able to fill that one.
They're not gonna make a rigos, but if we could.
Yeah, they're not gonna make a whole lot of difference.
But if we could.
This one concerns me.
If we could get a handle on them, why not?
What are you looking at, R eleven?
Who's golf courses is it?
Wentworth Hall. Wentworth Hall.
Don't worry about the house on that, it's been seven years ago.
Yeah. Oh, you know what, that might be the one that we did a, remember, we did a land exchange?
Yep, the Sherman or something like that.
Yeah, so what number is it?
R eleven, seven.
R eleven, seven. Willetts, that's the one that, and actually. That may or may not be accurate. Is it, is this brand new, this map? Remember, we just did a, remember he did a land swap just a year ago?
I just got this data from.
Yeah, it says goodbye, stay sure.
Oh, so it's accurate?
I think it must be.
Yeah, so that's Willetts and.
That may not be today, but this is today, so that.
Oh, what the hell is that?
But is, does that have a building on it or not? It might.
Yes, it has.
I think it did have a structure.
It has a building, it has, it was a Willetts camp.
Yeah.
Was one of Charlie Way's cabins.
Okay, so.
So it's a residential lot.
Residential with a cabin on it.
Yep.
And what's that one right under Tara's wrist? Is that the little white one that, is that it?
Little diamond there.
R twelve, maybe?
Is that a twelve? Can't really see through the lines, but.
Saxton, Saxton's the name, I'm frightened.
Four words.
That one with Willetts, yeah, Saxton, Byron Saxton.
Okay, what number is it?
It's, it's this.
C insert one?
C insert one. There's gotta be an insert somewhere.
Are they in the back maybe?
Page?
Next page.
Yeah, the insert's gotta be on the next page or the first page.
Or maybe way at the back? Oh, okay, oh, yeah, insert one.
What is the number?
Nowhere to go. It's fifty-five, three.
R twelve. Fifty-five. Simone, three. I don't, I don't see three. I guess I see fifty-five.
Well, there is a fifty-five dash three on this map.
Oh, you know, this is Simone, Eugene Simone. So that's the one I was saying that.
By Eagle Mountain.
And has the, what do you put, fourteen acres in an amusement or?
The Willetts one, wasn't that the one where he was combined, there, he was combining two lots that were across the road.
Yeah. That was, that's that one. But, but this one, there's Simone.
Right. So that, at least part of that is in conservation lands, you think, right?
Yeah, we just did, uh, he was gonna put three houses.
That was this part whole thing right there, was it?
Yeah, they were gonna get three houses out of it and fourteen or twenty acres in conservation with the Upper Saco Valley Land Trust. And that just went through this year, like literally in October, December.
So this is, so we're calling this concern?
That's a good idea.
Well, some, some of it. Yeah, does it say how big it is? Yeah.
Let's try R three, no.
Because there's a couple lots there.
R three, maybe?
Did it have an acreage on the insert?
Yeah.
Five point three six.
That can't, that's fourteen.
Yeah, well, remember that weird, those weird boundaries?
Right.
Yeah, because of, of the spite boundary.
Did somebody own all?
Yeah, that's it, well, they're, they're brothers. And I think it was, it was this land. And I think this is gonna be the conservation. And they were gonna build three houses. And this is basically a spite piece of property.
Okay, I'll put it in residential and you know, this might be preserved.
Yeah, that was put into the Saco Valley. Yeah, this is the Saco Valley Land Trust. It just got put in.
R three definitely doesn't have it.
The end of the summer.
Let's be in tax, that's commercial.
You know what, R ten, we have not looked at. And that could be R ten. Let's try it.
Ten?
Yeah. Probably, probably that's the divided, but yeah.
Did you expose it last night?
No, no way.
If it has.
So if R ten doesn't do it.
Right.
So Larry, yeah, that was.
It's up there.
One of these is a ball field, I heard you say.
This, this, well, no, no, no. This used to be the old ball field, the back.
Two buildings on it, what, what's that?
So R ten, the upper corner of it is where this is.
It goes with the golf course?
Yeah.
Then are we down to just?
It could all, if it ought to be related to that, does it?
Well, we're pretending it was still.
R three for full northern area. You wanna try that? Did we look out already at R three?
Never do that again.
There's R three. Yeah, so that's no help.
Give me a little fro.
Oh, did you do it, is that it? No. Oh, it's still, it's right up in the corner, it's not covered. Do we look at R five?
We're not here.
Where, which one are you looking for right now?
I think we're down to this one.
Well, and, and that.
Oh, yeah.
Are you still trying to find that one?
Yeah.
Let's look at R five.
This one.
This is just below it.
This is that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
Let's try R five, I think.
I think we did. We had already crossed five out.
Yeah. I think we found that. But that seems to make sense if this is the conservation, it's a three high block. And I knew he said he had footage on sixteen.
Oh, yeah.
Right, because that was one of the issues, was the commercial zoning.
Just nasty, just nasty.
Rural residential on the other part.
So we found this property anywhere?
This one?
No, the one just about it.
Right here.
What is that?
We know what that is.
Yeah, what map is that on, that might be on this map.
Very bizarre. And so maybe we're not getting any taxes on that if we don't think it exists.
R five.
Because if this is the database, if you use that, it's not available.
R five, the only other one we haven't figured out is that one.
Okay.
That should be pretty easy.
And we didn't get a lot in block for the golf course, right?
We don't have lots.
I can just put it in as under all of those.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
It's all floodplain, I think.
Yes, missed it. We'll have to have to talk to our back person.
So bizarre. Okay, so.
What was this one, what was the number on this one? Because it should be on the book right after it, right?
That was on R five, right.
I have five.
I guess, let's look again at R five.
The one we were just looking at.
Okay, yeah, so I'm, R nine.
Please.
Can we look at nine?
What are you looking at, R nine?
The one right below is a lot that we're wondering about. So thirty-seven is the closest one.
Thirty-eight is below it.
Yeah.
So it makes sense, that would be thirty-six. Do you see a thirty-six anywhere?
There is a thirty-six on here.
Oh, thirty-six right there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-seven is U.S. Forest Service. Thirty-six is Harvard Camp Corporation?
I know that one, yeah.
Yeah.
How about, is there a thirty-five? Number there, thirty-four, thirty-three.
Association.
The O Hutman's Association.
How about thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Yep, there's thirty-three. Thirty-two is nothing.
Town of Jackson, thirty-two.
Thirty-two, Town of Jackson.
Well, that's, that's this little piece right here.
Oh, that little thing.
No, that's the, that corner of Old Jackson Road.
Right, that we talked about last time.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's look for that other one right near the red on that map.
Forty-one?
Let's look for the one we're missing near the red, right near the village.
Here.
Yeah, we are, we are.
Mirror Lake.
Is it near a lake, I'm guessing, yeah.
I wasn't sure.
So.
Well, that's my first guess.
Might be the lake.
Oh, so it's water.
Might be.
Could be.
It's shaped like water.
Oh, it is, okay.
Let's run them out and make sure.
I mean, it's quickly.
Nine?
Further down.
I think it's close maybe to R twelve. Oh, you know, there it is, right?
Yeah, okay, that's water.
Oh, okay.
It's now like.
It's really our only.
So this is, this is the only mystery. I'll call it, there's a forest.
Yeah.
Somebody has a, not already, but before Wednesday.
John, did you say you were gonna check with the office about that?
Nah, I can ask him, obviously.
I thought something rather was sad about that.
Can you stick that piece under the Xerox machine so you have that?
Sure.
For, um, you know, I'm gonna give you much, I'm gonna give you much graffiti for this weekend. Do care. Just take this. This is my first draft. Here. No, just keep it.
Oh, you are.
It's just a draft.
So we were looking at just north of R, R nine thirty-seven, right? Was the one, trying to find, okay, good.
And so I gave him a copy of.
So that might be.
A not as good copy.
If you need this, want me to take it out here?
Okay, so that's, um. Part of it. So one of the things that we, we need to kind of have a crystal ball about is what, what percentage will be non-residential as the, as the town borough? And that's why I looked at some of the things on this handout with the, that looks like this and some stapled together. Kinda like to look at the town with the towns around it. And so this is just Carroll County and our, our towns that are in it and the labor market area. And to just make some comparisons, I took North Country Council Carroll County towns that were in the Conway labor market area. Just kind of have a logical grouping and look at some growth trends. Timing isn't a part of a build-out. A build-out is how much development can there be if everything is built according to your zoning? But, but it still helps to think about what kind of growth, look at those. So just this first, the, here's the double slide. The back of the first page just has the census population, year-on population for the eight towns. And some not yet published for year-on's only projections that, that we worked with the other regional planning commissions and OEP. OEP didn't have the money in their budget this year to do projections and we felt we needed them for our regional plans. So, so we, we paid to have it done.
It was on map eight the whole time.
So Jackson's numbers look.
We, we found it, it's R eight twenty-eight.
We, we found it. It's R eight twenty-eight. And if you look in the book, there's no, there's no name.
There's nothing.
We found R eight twenty. We got the lot.
It's R eight twenty.
We found it. There's no question on the book, there's no name.
It may be on the cards.
Yeah. So that they can work out.
Yeah, I'll have to check the cards.
So the population projec-, I was just talking about the, the back of the first page of this, you know, um, just trying to kind of get our arms around growth patterns in, in Jackson. And the, the projections show something kind of strange, which sounds, so the population going down before it goes.
Oh, yeah.
Duck up.
I can see that, too. Schools always going up.
And how they, how they did this was they looked at each, um, each age group by sex and, and based on the last ten years, how many, how many are dying, how many are having babies, how many are moving in, how many are moving out, and they're projecting that forward. And grouping it back together for the county and then kind of divvying up the county share in, um, and I'm not clear whether that was just proportional or looking at previous trends. We don't have our report yet. It hasn't been known.
So basically, it isn't going up much.
Yeah.
And when you look at, when I graph them and you, you see the two, you see Jackson kind of level with, with the area as a whole going up quite a bit. And, and Jackson having this kind of going way up for forty years, but then leveling off. So again, the, the timing isn't relevant to a build-out, but, but it kind of helps to think about what kind of growth it will be and how it should be residential and how it might be commercial industrial. To get a little bit of sense of that, I looked at, um, the New Hampshire Public Finance Consortium online tool that, that makes it really easy to access assessors' data now. And just kind of pulled out the value of commercial industrial buildings and land as a percentage and net values and, and it only went back to two thousand and three. That's no magic number there, but, and the most recent was two thousand and eleven, so I looked at that being, um.
And when you looked at the projected population growth, you mentioned several factors that, you know, were there any particular factors, you know, such that were different between the area and Jackson? You know, was it that we don't have as many families moving in, that our families don't have as many children, that there are too few women in town? You know, what, what's the difference between the two that's causing the, the very extreme difference in the curves?
I have to wait and see the report with the methodology explained because I'm not, I'm not entirely clear how he divided it. I mean, he did the projections for the county and then he had, some way he divided it up by town. And until I see that, I can't. I mean, it may just be looking at patterns from the last ten years.
Right, I guess what I'm curious is what particular factors are different between the area and Jackson? So, you know, is it, does the rest of the area have families moving in from outside the area and Jackson doesn't? Or, you know, is, right? Is it that, you know, Jackson residents, you know, of age, et cetera, aren't having children where area residents are? And what, what are the specific?
I'll, I'll see what I can learn more about that.
And what, what exactly are you going to bring to us in January? And like you said, is it an outline or, or you're not going to have it done?
I hope to.
Oh, you do.
If I have the, if you give me the conservancy on before next Wednesday, I'll have it, I'll have a draft number for you. I mean, I'll have a draft report with the results at your January meeting and.
When we say results, I, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't understand this process, so I'm, I'm.
Well, the end number, the build-out, a build-out is how much growth are you zoned for right now? If everything was built according to what you zoned it to be, what, what does that look like? So why I look at some growth numbers and how much is, um, non-seasonal and how much is non-residential?
There's no determining.
So that I can give you a sense of it will be this many year-round residents and this many square feet of commercial space, this many seasonal residents.
We talked, I think, at the last week about looking at running the model with, you know, some changes in, in our zoning.
Yep, I have that on my list.
Okay.
Um, and, and I had offered that in, um, in the proposal to, I mean, that's the whole benefit of the build-out is to test some scenarios. Well, if we make this change, what does that do? But the first step is what are the assumptions? So that's, that's kind of what we need, all this.
But a time period as far as.
Time period, I.
You can't, no.
No. But I think you can get, I mean, I think, I think you can make a better guess at that than me, really, maybe, because I'm guessing that you have got a sense of, of why, you know, of why Jackson looks like that and the rest of the area looks like, oh. You probably have better answers to why, you know, what, what happened in these different decades that made large growth, like in the seventies, right, you went from four hundred people to six hundred and forty people.
Part of that was.
And again, in the nineties.
Wasn't part of that because that's when Wentworth, um, condos were built about, what, wasn't it just around the eighties?
Eighties, yeah. Would say that the building rooms have a lot to do with it.
Right. That's what I'm saying, that you probably, you can probably say, well, this was this development and that development, and there wasn't a lot of growth in the eighties. The seventies and the nineties was when, when we see it in the year-round population. Now, maybe you saw it in seasonal residences in the eighties. So.
Economic downturn back in the eighties, too. But, you know, I just recall over, uh, a couple of weeks ago, they had a little thing in the paper about the census back in the eighteen hundreds, but it, they, I don't know if anyone caught that, but in eighteen sixty, we had six hundred some odd residents. And by eighteen ninety, we were down to three hundred and some odd. And, but the fact that we had six hundred and some odd full-time residents in eighteen sixty, which is.
And that's true of.
That's not too far from where we are.
Right, and that's true of many of ours. Right, that's true of most diverse small towns in the North Country with, when the mills, um, were booming, when the mills were booming, that was, you know, a lot of the towns were just kind of now getting back to those little homes.
And farming was, uh.
That's right.
Farming left.
So large families were also the business of farming. I mean, that's how you got.
Well, Dean Davis had eleven full-time workers year-round.
Yeah.
And back then, that was a lot because it was small hotels.
So from, from this data, I'll, I'll be able to see what percentage is commercial industrial in square feet. But I thought it was interesting to look at, um, what that looked like in, in dollars, in the tax base. And I'm guessing that in the last ten years, more year growth has been residential than commercial industrial. And your, accordingly, your population, your percentage that's commercial industrial dropped from thirteen percent to ninety percent. So, um. But so there's where we need to talk about an assumption. Do, do we, if it's dropping, if you're seeing more residential development, do we want to use the same percentage of square feet that you have now? Or do we want to make some assumptions about, about the trend continuing where more development is residential rather than them growing at the same rate?
I would say that residential is always going to grow faster and I believe will always be a greater and greater proportion of our evaluation. I think commercial is going to fall behind more and more because when the houses being built are quite substantial. And that's where, that's what's being built. Nobody's developing strip malls or.
Are we going to be able to get a sense of how many, you know, things like how many, uh, non-conforming lots there are or, or, you know, or how many?
I can easily do that.
Or how many, you know, properties are over X number of acres or?
Whatever, if I can do any of that that you want, just tell me what you, I mean, that's easy.
Well, the other thing I'd love to know is how many, uh, you know, the value of homes, is there any chance of that? Like, are there, you know, how many homes do we have under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? You know, that, that, that would be a huge thing going forward as far as housing. A young couple can get a, a loan for a house under two hundred, you know, pretty inexpensively, but.
You said, you said something else in between that I, you went right to the next thing before I was just.
I think I was talking about.
How many, you said, how many non-conforming lots, how many, and then before you said how many homes under two hundred and fifty, you said something on.
Acres, sorry, acres.
Like how many in different acreage categories?
Oh, non-conforming lots.
I got that.
I got that. And then he went to, uh.
Value.
Value.
You said something else in between. Was it just size, how many?
I thought it was size of lots.
How many in different size categories?
Right, how many were, you know, small, or how many over fifty acres or a hundred acres?
Okay.
I know we have a lot of big properties. But all that very much will help us in planning going forward.
That's easy.
Not good.
Not a problem.
Now, Tara, one of the things you mentioned, I think, in your email was that, um, changing the frontage doesn't make much difference in terms of what the build-out would be. Why is that?
Maybe I need to think more about that, but, um, really would just run it with, with acres.
Okay. So we were thinking, um, right now we have two hundred feet frontage required in residential districts and, um, one fifty in the commercial. And we were thinking that maybe if we changed it to one fifty in the residential districts, make it uniform through the town, it might make it easier for people to develop. And maybe they wouldn't need long, you know, lollipop-type, uh, lot subdivisions and long roads going in or something.
So it'll make the build-out number more likely to occur, right? But the, but the ultimate number is, is assuming that roads are put in to access every.
Okay.
That, when you do a build-out, it's, it's what's the most that could happen. So you're configuring the lots, assuming some new roads, and you subtract a percentage for the new roads.
When you calculate, I'm just trying to get a grip on what you're, so say there's a hundred-acre lot and, uh, you calculate it could be built out to how many lots? Is it based on the parseptic regulations or is it based?
Well, your zoning uses the soil base, soil lot sizes, so, so I'll overlay the soils with it.
You're saying, Tara, that, that because you can build a road to create frontage, it doesn't really matter what the frontage is versus, or is that?
Not for this purpose, but in, in reality, it will.
It will, but.
It will.
As long as you have the acres.
It will speed up the timing of reaching that number.
To reaching the, the landlocked lots, that would take care of that, too.
Well, you're, you, when you do the build-out now, it's, you're assuming that that's all the roads.
You have to with those roads, right?
Yeah, so that if you do have a landlocked parcel that isn't obstructed, you know, for example, we have a piece way up, uh, at Prospect Farm that is totally un-accessible because there's national forest all around it. But other landlocked parcels, you're assuming a road could be put in and that could be developed. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Will you, you know, will you know that? In other words, when you come to that lot in particular?
We don't, it's.
Will you?
You, you, it would be a lot more magnitude, more cost if you wanted a lot by that build-out.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
I, I didn't yet look at the, the trends in terms of seasonal homes of the last page on this. I just looked at what, what's there now. Do you have a sense about, you know, is, is the percentage that's there now a good number? Do you see that, has it been changing over the last ten or twenty years as a proportion?
They're building bigger.
Right?
Yeah, if you look at, I guess the standard indicator, you know, is school population, it's pretty parallel to the year-round popu-, population. And that's been pretty steady. I would say that, that there's a lot of change in seasonal versus, versus year-round in the past decade. Well, I'm guessing.
And it's mostly seasonal.
Then you can look at, you know, I guess the.
Yeah, you're a lot.
Terms to, to, to proportion right now, if, if the tax goes, right?
Right, I, I mean, I have the proportion right now.
Most tax bills, most go out of town.
Yeah.
Really, truly, they do.
Tara, there was a study done, um, by the Workforce Housing Group, um, the Housing Coalition in Mount Washington Valley. It said that Jackson has some nineteen hundred housing units total, um, and about eight hundred of them, uh, I don't have the exact number and I can't find the book that was here at one point. But some eight hundred of them are typically occupied on April first of every year when the census is done.
That's quite different than the census numbers that say a thousand and nine housing units and three hundred and ninety-nine occupied.
Yeah. So that would be something to try to figure out.
Yeah.
I'll take a look again. Maybe I've misremembered the numbers in that book.
Is it online?
I, oh, it is, good. Let me just see if I can find the numbers quickly.
Did I steal it from you?
More likely.
No, how was that the?
I mean, some towns look at the census numbers and say, well, those just aren't right and that something strange was going on.
I'm just trying to remember mailing lists, how many shots.
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
I mean, all I know is the taxmen state that go out, out of, out of state.
Five hundred and seventy seasonal property.
I am totally out to lunch in the, uh, numbers. Um, I think it reflects exactly the numbers that you've got. Uh, although actually vacant units, according to this, were, um, six hundred and ten. The occupied unit, three ninety-nine, is correct.
Right.
But I had.
Five hundred and seventy of the six hundred and ten are seasonal, they're not, they're not vacant as in for sale for rent, but this is.
Okay. Great.
So, um, keeping on with my list here, so you can get on with your other business. One of my questions, and I think I know the answer, but you have quite a bit of land that's within the national forest boundary that's not national forest. They're, they're not actively acquiring land.
No.
In recent years, right? I mean, that's, okay, so we don't, that's not a factor. In terms of the, the zoning and doing the build-out, it, one thing that makes it kind of easy to do yours is that the soil-based lot size already takes the, the slope and the wet into account. So I don't need to do any kind of filming with that. The floodplain, um, is a different matter because you have a no-build flood ordinance. And what I probably do is try to get a sense of whether there are some lots that, that just totally wipes out, um, versus other lots that can be made by putting part of it in. Because you, you allow it to be part of the minimum lot size, right? Yes.
As long as the remainder can hold the septic system.
Right. So I wouldn't just subtract it because you could configure lots to use part of it. I wasn't totally clear on how your floodplain district works. I wondered if you could just, kind of walk me through that. Because it's, it started out saying it will encompass, um, the, the floodwater, then it went on to say the bodies of water specifically defined in this district are as follows. Is that saying the same thing or is that contradiction? I have the floodplain on, on the map that I handed out. I don't know if that helps, but the map, this is from the farms here. Is, is this same, the same thing another way?
Well, I, um.
I think it's the same sort of thing.
Are you asking about the district boundaries?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Five two one and five two three. You might want to clarify it in a minute, by the way, because it's just not, it's kind of open to, to be, I think, the way you have it written.
Well, I think the difficulty was that, um, we, in the, when the town set up the resi-, the River Conservation District, we wanted to restrict further than, uh, the FEMA flood mapping restricted. And also set up that wild and scenic river, um, qualification for the Wildcat. So, uh, it is, uh, it does have all those same zones, but I think that some, uh, of the zones that are covered in the district boundaries of the River Conservation District are more than are covered by the, uh, FEMA.
So five two three adds to five two one?
That's my understanding. I, I was not here when that was done and maybe somebody else has a better understanding of what was done, but that's the way I read it.
Okay. I'll treat it that way. I just, you might want to think about clarifying in a minute.
Okay. If, um. Would it make sense if, if Tara has additional questions? I think George Boredash is maybe one of the best informed people about what that covers. I don't know if anybody else is as well-informed about it as he.
What year was that, huh?
Eighty-five. I believe.
I guess we'll just book it up and see who was on the board back then.
Well, George was the one who put the book together and was the head of that committee.
River Conservation?
Yeah.
Do you have an active zoning board that, that?
Um, well, it was a separate study group.
No, but now, I mean, you have a zoning board who.
Yeah.
Has spent time implementing this and has had to think about it. How are they interpreting it would be something to ask.
Okay. Well, why don't I get in touch with, who's the zoning board chair now? Is it still Frank? Okay.
And unless I hear different from you, I'll assume that it's, it's somehow adding, that it's these two things together.
Okay.
That's my list. And then, um, you're going to tell me what zoning district boundary changes you might want to look at. In a minute, so.
We want to, as we mentioned, extending the zoning, uh, how, sixteen?
We just voted that, lots of lots.
And that's been, you already have that information, I guess.
Well, again, I, I think that that. Well, again, I, I think that that vote last March was very confusing because it was that the planning board does not recommend it. And some planning board members do recommend it. And, you know, it was, I, I had a real problem with that. So I don't think the issues did. There are a lot of residents in.
My first opinion, but we, we have a difference of opinion on some of those.
Sure, but in the master plan, in the survey for the last master plan, there were sixty-three percent of the town that said that they favored that change. And so I, I think that maybe if it, if the planning board had not been against it.
That was thirteen years ago as opposed to a few months ago.
Right, but where the planning board came out against it, I think that swayed a lot of people. For example, my husband voted against it and he's very much in favor of making the change. I think people misunderstood because the planning board was in opposition to it. So in my view, it's not a dead issue if people want to bring it up. I, I think people ought to have a chance to discuss it and, and, you know, if they're interested in it.
But also, if you've owned a house there all these years, you're devaluing their property.
Well, I mean, that's the same anywhere.
Well, people bought it, they knew what it was.
Sure. But that's, that's the situation all over this world.
Well, I know, but it was just voting. You've got to keep bringing it up till you get to your want.
No, I'm not saying that.
Can do, but it can't be brought up again. It can do.
Sure, sure.
We could do, just do the build-out based on what you have for zoning and that you process that, think about it, and then go from there.
I think that would be constructive for us is just to, here's what we have, do the build-out. If we see stuff within that, and we say, well, it's time to tweak this or tweak that. That's what I think our, our work would really be, is to take that information and then see, you know, where we go with it.
So as long as I hear back from you before Wednesday, then we're on schedule.
And you need, you just need tax map and lot numbers.
Yeah. As long as he is. Because then I'll hit the white one. So I.
I'm going to go sleep a flag in.
We talked about, yeah. Oh, hold on, wait.
What I don't have quickly, sorry, is Upper Saco Valley. Would you have that, Betsy? Because I know you, isn't your land in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have those.
Okay.
I don't even know which ones they are.
I can get in touch with them and see if they can give us a list.
Now, you, you wanted to do, I think, a presentation when, when you're all set with the results, a presentation to the select board that you'd also invite the public, is that? Should I, should I kind of pencil in your February meeting for that so that I have it available? Is it likely to be a planning board night? Just thinking that we could see a draft at your January meeting and then we go to vote.
Would there be time then if we see the draft in January and come up with some, turn it over or something to run through the model?
Yeah.
And go back? I think that was the end.
I just, I just want to make sure I have dates available that, that work for you.
Yeah.
Get hooked up pretty far ahead, but once people get their new calendars that still use paper, January, February, it'll fill up. So I'll, I'll walk out your January and February meetings.
I can't see anything that, I think that'd be good. I, I think we can move. One of the things I was going to bring up is whether we, at some point, we've done a really good job of doing our work here at the table, but should we get some smaller groups working on segments of this to kind of fill in that time in the month between meeting to meeting?
For the master plan or for segments of?
Even for the build-out, because if we have a draft in January, in order to, you know, be productive, we may want to break into smaller groups to play segments.
And meet on a different day.
Yeah, and, and lead on a smaller basis.
With no worst case.
Yeah.
When would you need, if we want to see any alternative numbers, when would you need length of those changes so that you have it ready for the February?
I'd say a week, but that's kind of, you know, like right now our water's broken, so good to have a little buffer time, you know.
A week a day.
Right, I mean, it could only take me a couple hours to do the thing, to kind of schedule the DAF time with the other person and hope everything works right.
So if our February meeting is on the thirteenth, if we got things to you by February first or if something other that would.
Yeah.
Be plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Quick to go.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your time.
No problem.
I think that you've brought us all into it, all closer.
You didn't know I was going to put you to work.
How far do you have to drive?
You know, I'm not going to go home tonight because I have, I have to be in Bethlehem first thing in the morning. And I live sixty-seven miles to the other side of Bethlehem.
You're still in Vermont?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so you just got to get a room.
Yes.
All right.
Have a good rest of the evening.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
All righty, we're heading under this accumulation of October by minutes. There's the name, copies of them, anybody not have their copy?
I'll make a motion to accept mandates of freedom.
You have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second. Anybody have any, everybody had a chance to peruse? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. And we have the November minutes.
I want to say that I made, I found two mistakes right after I'd sent them. And they're both on the reverse page, under the master plan review, where right below the middle of that paragraph, it says at the second policy. It should have been at the third policy. And a sentence down where it says at the third policy, it should say at the fourth policy.
And you changed second policy all the way, where it's?
Just that word, second, where it says just below the middle of that paragraph, at the second policy, it should say at the third policy, first objective, add this. And then where it says at the third policy, it should say at the fourth policy. My confusion being as I was doing them up that we had deleted the second policy. And so as I was reading along, I'd already mentally deleted that policy. And so it was gone when I tried to write it. So I moved that that change be made.
Any other changes?
Question on the money. Did you find out whether if you don't lose it, you use it or lose it? On, we're not certain if the fifteen thousand approved by the town board.
All right.
Oh, yeah, could you answer that question? I did not, I just wrote it down as you were asking.
Well, I just read these this afternoon, so it's a question I did. I almost think you have to request to keep it. Yeah, otherwise you, you lose it, but I may be wrong, John.
It depends on how it was.
How it was put in, so that's why, but I did.
Yeah. Be good to know.
I moved to accept the minutes.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? I do have a letter from the Carroll County Registry of Deeds, just telling us what is acceptable. Carroll County Registry does accept twenty-four by thirty-six plans, does not accept eight and a half by eleven. They can be an exhibit, but they cannot be the registered document. Recording space is three by three. Anyway, we should keep, keep track of this because when we're approving subdivisions, it'll be applicable for us to do it right. And then there won't be any hitches when it goes to be registered as Carroll County. Anybody want to read it further right now? I will have it on hand. We have a letter from Upper Saco Valley Land Trust.
Another one.
And they would like you to donate some money.
Give it to the person that's able to least.
No, I think we're just on mailing lists. They don't really expect us to kick in. But they now hold thirty-eight easements and seven lands in fee. And we're currently working on fourteen additional projects. Keeping up their good work. All right, should we, should we blast into the master plan? Have we done our work for the evening? Where are we at?
I have one question, comment in regards to what we were doing at the last meeting or going through the goals and making edits to the goals. Is that not a bit of hardcore, of course? I mean, are we looking for guidance in doing that from the survey? It seemed like we were sort of.
We really are.
Pre-judging what the goals of the town are.
I think now that we're rolling with this, we're really in a place to wait and get that information, at least the rough draft, before we start forming up too many of our questions. Because that's, it's going to be really important what we learn from that.
I guess it seems to me that the survey role is the first thing in front of us to get done, to get that out and then get that feedback back.
Right.
You know, it occurs to me, I mean, we did get a tax bill and it occurs to me, maybe everybody does get a tax bill. I don't know if you know, John. I know last time we were discussing that we wouldn't be able to piggyback on the town mailing, but we probably could piggyback onto their June mailing if we didn't need it beforehand. But maybe we, maybe that's just delaying things too much and we don't want to wait that long.
I think we have to, again, get, at least get the rough draft and see, you know. I think we'll know then how much time we're going to have to put into, you know, forming up our questions for a questionnaire.
You mean to put the survey in the tax bill, is that?
Well.
Yeah, that's what.
And I don't know if we'll wait that long.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's.
And I'm thinking it might come out by March.
Right.
You know, if we're really on track to get a rough draft in January, you know, some more input by February, we might be able to, you know, get a mailing out by March, which I think would be appropriate. That's just my initial impression right now. Again, I don't think we'll know until we have the information in front of us. Bring the keys, that's, that was good for you to remember. Get us in here. All right. I'm a happy camper. John, would you like to? I would say so.
I'd like you to turn the heat on.
Any opposed?
I do want to ask one quick question. How am I getting this information to Carol? I don't have an email address for her, just.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay. Would you just come send it to me?
I, I, didn't I forward your email to you?
Is it in there? Yeah.
Yeah, when I asked about.
Well, I'll take it.
Email you unless you have that.
Oh, perhaps, yeah. I'll see Julie tomorrow about these questions.
Great.
I avoid heat, it's cold.
What was I doing?
I know, but it's cold and heat, John.